And at this time, I would like to call to order the organizational meeting at 7:04. Roll call show that all staff is present and that Board Member Gillan has been excused. And at this point in time, I'd like to appoint Chairperson Pro Tem, Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Wong, members of the Board. We have the election of officers, the slate of officers, and I will be taking nominations for President.
I'd like to nominate Terrence Williams.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Congratulations, Mr. Williams. I will be taking nominations for Vice President.
Nominate Ed Gilliland for Vice President.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am taking nominations for Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Rob Hammond.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Therosian as Secretary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Election of a Board Member to represent the district in our county committees, in the school district organization for the 2017-2018.
I'd like to nominate Ed Gilliland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Needs to show up.
Yeah, he's not here.
Need to certify the authorized signatures for the L.A. County Office of Education for the period of December 13, 2017, through December 12, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Rich?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-0. Point a member as the Board's representative for the 2017-2018 school year for the negotiation of the superintendent's contract and compensation as directed by the Board.
I'd like to nominate Terrence Williams.
Second.
Board Member Rich?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. I'd like to adopt a resolution for payment of Board Members pursuant to Education Code Section 35120.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Rich?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries 4-0. If there are no objections from the Board of Education, I'd like to table the designation of representatives in Items 1.9 through 1.9.3 until the next Board Meeting where all five Board Members are present.
No objection.
Okay, then let's move over to the administration of the oath of office to the new Board President. Mr. Williams, will you join me at the podium, please? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Terrence Williams, do solemnly swear...
I, Terrence Williams, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
...and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And I will well and faithful discharge the duties which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Williams. President Williams.
First of all, let's get Board Member Wong to the podium, please.
I've got a few choice words for Brian that I'll save in my acknowledgement to the public. But on behalf of the governing Board of the Monrovia Unified School District, we'd like to present this plaque to you. We have other items that we cannot share publicly.
That's good.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Terrence.
I would like to say, first of all, this is a totally humbling experience to serve in this capacity. It's especially rewarding because Brian transitioned the gavel to me. Brian was the first Board Member that I had the opportunity to work with that told me what not to say, what to say, and be timely in my understanding of how to say it. I would like to acknowledge to all of you that we have an excellent Board here. In the likes of Ed Gilliland, who is not here, I consider him as a gentle giant. Also, Chris Rich, who gave me the opportunity when he decided not to run and endorsed me to take his position, and Chris, I will be forever grateful for that. Chris's role has extended because of the likes of Alexander Zuko, who decided to move up in the world in Sacramento. So this tells you about his character completely. Rob Hammond for being a true friend, unfiltered in every way. Rob won't tell you, but Rob Hammond has created a lot of things in the city of Monrovia, and yet he still serves. So thank you, Mr. Hammond. From my perspective, we will continue to have transparency dictating the Brown Act as it is accustomed to us to be inclusive to all of you, as we continue to dictate policy and decisions for the Los Angeles County Office of Education. We have great team with our staff, which starts with Dr. Therosian, Dr. Jackson, and Dr. Kaiser. We have a great administrative team here. We have great teachers here. We have great janitors here. We have great counselors here. We are an exception as a foothill, the gem city of the foothills, shall I say. This includes our partnership with the City of Monrovia and the likes of Mayor Adams, who's in the back. Thank you for coming, Mayor. The City Council, Tina Cherry, Oliver Chee. We have an excellent rapport with them. We thought it was important that your electives be together with no type of agenda. Also, this includes the businesses of Monrovia, who recently was finalist of the business friendly city. It is important for our businesses to be a part of our school for obvious reasons. The businesses will support the future which we're trying to mold. Also, I'd like to compliment the PTA involvement. We just learned the other day that we have over 300 PTA membership in all of our elementary schools and over 600 in the high school. And I would appeal to you as a parent of four, it is important for the PTA to be involved so you can mirror the efforts of the teachers in the classroom at home. Our special needs focus is very strong. We started a campaign which consists of a trip to Washington, D.C. to advocate on behalf of the special needs. If you did not know, we do not receive the resources that should be warranted for the special need, and in cases, we have to subsidize from our general fund, which we think is not appropriate. Inclusiveness with all stakeholders of the gem city of the foothills. What that means to me, inclusiveness means everybody has a role as a stakeholder. I'm not concerned about your political preference. My concern, as well as the Board, and I want to continue to mirror what they have already started, is working together as a team. Separating our differences. I used to make the term, if I couldn't articulate the dialogue to my kids, I definitely didn't want to have that entertain those comments to another adult. I've had the blessed privilege of residing in this community for 28 years in the same home. My wife and I have raised four kids in this district. Monrovia, in my opinion, is second to none. I was blessed with the opportunity to have a daughter that was in the marching band of the Monrovia High School, a lot of long practices. I was blessed with the opportunity to have a son who won the first CIF championship, back-to-back. Thanks to Dr. Jackson, I had the opportunity to announce that game. I cried half the time, but I was there. My daughter was in the drill team, my second, third child, category one. I know all the routines. And then my last seat is my son in the back there. Say hi, Sam. He's affectionately called Big Boy. He's a special needs student. So my wife and I, we've had full circle of understanding the importance of residing in this wonderful community. You know, there's a person here right now, and I'm glad he's here because I wanted to dictate something he told to me 24 years ago, and I wanted to share that with you because I never forgot it. And he said to me, "Your talents and your gifts can sometimes take you where your character can't sustain you." That's a good-looking man over there with the silver hair, Bishop de Lord. You know, just keep it real because I'm glad he cemented that in me. I share that with my kids. I share it in anybody that wants to have any dialogue with me because I think character counts. You know, it's not about what you say, it's what you do, you know? And if we're going to be examples for the kiddos, we have to exemplify character. Now, I'd like to conclude this and dedicate my presidency to two people. One in the likes of my late Aunt Felice Laverne Hendricks, who was my mother's baby sister. She was six years my senior. She was my best friend. She was a schoolteacher for 25 years. She retired. When she was teaching in Dallas, Texas, she was teaching Spanish and English before we even started this English language transition. She retired so she can tutor at home. Then she decided to go back to school, and she graduated with a master's at Dallas Baptist University. Unfortunately, six months later, she passed with a brain tumor. We had no clue that she was going to school with a brain tumor, but that's our good. I'll say that because I know what type of climate I'm in. But the last person is someone that I looked up to tremendously, and I used to share everything with her, and that is the likes of Chris Mariconda. A lot of you know Chris, and she meant the world to me. I could confide in her about everything. I frankly thought she was the smartest person in the entire school district, and I still think she is. She was, rather. But those are the things that I want you to know about Terrence Williams. I love Monrovia. I'm not interested in the dialogue that separates. I wasn't raised that way, and I wasn't taught that in the last 24 years. Inclusiveness warrants longevity. Inclusiveness warrants working together for the betterment of the community. Division doesn't hit a goal for me. So moving forward, I will mimic and mirror the examples that these three gentlemen have set forth for me, and I will move forward in that capacity, that same capacity. I would not take this job lightly. This is still a group. They just allow me to dictate the agenda. But we get along. We respect each other, which is more importantly. The biggest compliment I got, and I'll conclude with this, is when a photographer came, if you guys recall, a year and a half ago, and we were laughing, like most of the time we do after a policy and decisions is dictated. And he asked, "What do you guys, are you guys on the Board?" And we were just cracking up because that's what we do, because we actually like each other. And Mr. Hammond at that time was the President, and he said, "Yes, I'm in charge of the agenda." The point I'm making is, we work as a team. There's no condescending tones. There's no backbiting. There's no, "If you're not here, I'll say this." We work as a team because we want to represent the best of Monrovia. And the way we represent that is by working with the Mayor, the City Council, Oliver Chee, Tina Cherry, and Kate, working with the businesses in this community, and making sure we understand the importance of being a parent and being involved in the gem city of the foothills. So with that, I solicit your prayers because this is not going to be an easy task for any of us. The personalities are the challenge. But I consider this as a blessing to move forward, and I hope you, and I pray that you will pray for me as I represent the Monrovia School District. Thank you. For you newbies, if you didn't know, the lowering of the chair... Oh, Lord. My pastor says I need to keep my composure. The lowering of the chair is a sign of love between us. So based on that note, we're going to take a reset so we can re-con, shall I say, regroup. But I would like to thank a lot of people that are here. Mr. Bell, I know you come from Duarte. Tom Adams, I know you had a lot of things to do as a mayor. Gail, I see my bishop, my first lady. I see Chris Holden's staff, and of course, I see my beautiful wife in the back and my daughter. Wave your hand, Bobby, because she never comes out. Yeah. All right, let's take a break. We'd like to reconvene the regular Board of Education open session at 7:23. 7:28, forgive me. Also, I'd like to invite Principal Jane Nichols and students from Brad Oaks to the podium.
My name is Janie Nichols, and I have the privilege of being the principal at Brad Oaks, and we are well represented here tonight. It is wonderful, in fact, awesome, to see all my students right here, and you get to hear about some of the fun and wonderful things we've been doing. In the meantime, I'm here to introduce to you two 4th grade students who will be leading the pledge, William Snyder and Patrice Cisa. Our two students here are part of Renaissance Leaders. William, will you tell us what we do? Renaissance Leaders at Brad Oaks. Are you ready? It's okay. All right, I will help him. Renaissance Leaders at Brad Oaks, our 4th and 5th grader students, and they do a lot to make our school better. They do activities such as with the library, we're putting that together, you want to say? Okay.
I could do something. So I'm William, and I'm part of Renaissance. Renaissance is if you don't get elected for student council, for some people. And in Renaissance, you do activities to help your school become a better district from making shirts for your school, like with logos, like this, if you could see it, to doing other stuff, like helping people out, like what they need help with, or just like something they need help with. I don't know any examples, but, but, um, but yes, that's what Renaissance is about, and I'm going to let Patrice take over. Please join me and stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It sort of humbles you when the kids say the Pledge of Allegiance, you've got to slow your roll up a little bit. Ms. Nichols, we'd like to take a picture of those two brave individuals who came to the microphone. Ladies and gentlemen, before I continue during my remarks, I will admit it, a person that's frankly the most important person in my campaign career, and that's my campaign manager. Gina Farnar, would you stand up, please? I'm going to embarrass you. This young lady is like a little sister to me. She's brainy, she's world-traveled. She was the only person on my team when we both ran by ourselves, and I am just privileged and blessed to know you, Gina. I thank you so much. I don't mean to embarrass you, but I just want to call a spade a spade. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be here. So thank you very much. Now, before we continue tonight's meeting, forgive me.
President, we've got an extra surprise from Brad Oaks, and Principal Nichols will introduce them to us.
So I am very pleased to announce, Mrs. Watchman, will you please stand up? She is a wonderful 3rd grade teacher at Brad Oaks, and her students just finished working on a project, and I was asked, Dr. Therosian asked me, "Do you have something that you can maybe talk about, or talk about the seasons a little more, the special season going into the holidays?" And I'm like, "Hmm, I don't know." So I went to Kathy, and of course, she said, "We just finished this project, and this project I'm going to let her talk to you about, but it's very fitting and very reflective for the season that we're in."
Good evening to all. This is the second night of Hanukkah, and Christmas is fast approaching. Many of us are reflecting on what we are grateful for in our lives. Tonight, a few Brad Oaks 3rd graders are going to share with you some of the things that they can't imagine life without. They made a list of what they couldn't live without, and they created art that you'll see tonight. Sharing first will be Nicholas Pies. And we have the art set. Can we turn it over this way?
These are some of the things I can't live without. School, food, family, God, desserts, iPads, TV, home, and pets. Next sharing will be Audrey Dodd.
I am thankful for a lot of things. I have some silly ones and just things you should be grateful for. These are the things I am grateful for. Electronics, candy, movies, Wi-Fi, Eeyore music, and family. Those are some of the things I am thankful for. Now, sharing will be Max Riley.
Some things I can't live without are school because I learn math from mathematics, the world to live, a home, sleep, and imagination. Finally, sharing will be Lydia Dodd.
There are many things I can't live without. You literally can't live without hospitals and doctors. Some other things are puppies, books, music, and my family. Those are six things I can't live without.
Thank you for sharing, and we wish you all a happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas.
Ms. Nichols, will you take a picture with the group, please?
Yes.
Before we continue tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that public comments are encouraged. Anyone interested in addressing the Board can complete a comment card. They're located in the lobby, and you can complete that card, and please hand it to Ms. Huff to my right, Shoshana Huff. Roll call.
Board Member Rich?
We're doing roll call here. All right, guys.
Here.
Board Member Wong?
Here.
Board President Williams? Are you here?
Here. Thank you for indulging me, Shoshana. Item number four, report on closed sessions.
All staff members are present.
All staff members are present, thank you. Obviously, this is my first transition, so Board Member Wong... Before we continue tonight's meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that public comments are encouraged. Anyone interested in addressing the board can complete a comment card. They're located in the lobby, and you can complete that card, and please hand it to Ms. Huff, to my right, Shoshana Huff. Roll call.
Board Member Rich.
We're doing roll call, here. All right, guys.
Board Member Hammond.
Here.
Board Member Wong. Board President Williams. Are you here?
Here. Thank you for indulging me, Shoshana. Item number four, report on closed sessions.
All staff members are present.
Yeah, all staff members are present, thank you. Obviously, this is my first transition, so Board Member Wong is doing the same thing he did four years ago, and so bear with me. But as you can see, Ed Gilliland is not here, all others are here. Number four, report on a closed session held this date. We spoke about expulsion hearing, no decisions, collective bargaining, no decision, and a public employee discipline, no decision. F1. Forgive me. I'm not certain why we're thanking them, forgive me.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna turn this over, I'm gonna yield to Board Member Hammond, thank you, Shoshana.
I'm gonna go to the podium. Over the last week, our community had a couple of significance events. One was during the annual holiday parade, about eight o'clock. And then Saturday evening, there was another significant event that took place with a pretty substantial fire on Norumbega. And you'd say to yourself, "Why is the school district talking about a fire that happened in our town?" Our community, when we come under an attack, which we were with an attack by a fire, it takes our entire community working together to bring that under control, including the school district. And you're gonna hear, everybody knows the police and fire response to the emergency, but when you have something like the magnitude it was going on on the hillsides, there are a lot of people that potentially have to get moved, and the school district owns buses. And so we are called into action to get people in those buses and get them to the people who are affected, to get them out of the affected area. We have an EOC here in the community, which is the Emergency Operations Center, which the school district is a part of. It's practiced and practiced and practiced and practiced until it becomes second nature. It's not until you see something of an event like we just had on Saturday evening, and when it works flawlessly, you know that all the practice was worth it. Luckily, we had a lot of air support that came in, as well as the firefighters on the ground, as well as the Police Department directing the traffic away from people who were trying to get up into the hillsides, either to looky-loo or trying to get home. It was a significant event, and so we, as a district, would like to thank the people who responded to that. And I would like to call up some of our school district personnel, who, in the middle of Saturday night, obviously, when you're working for a school district, you're probably not at work on a Saturday night. But they were called in on a moment's notice, came in, got a set of keys, got on a bus, and drove the bus up to help evacuate people the case may be. And I'd like to recognize Maria Barnes, Maria. Patricia Carter. Ronald Farrar. And Nelson Santos. Thank you. From a very grateful community, thank you. Please stay here for a second. We'd also like to recognize our champions from the Police Department, who came at a moment's notice and were doing the neighborly thing, and helping people get out of their homes, giving them information what they needed. I think, is there a slide of that fire? Did it come? There you go. That's what, that's what we were facing on Saturday night. I live about a block from there, so it's pretty close. I'd like to thank Captain Heath Harvey from the Monrovia Police Department. And Chief Alan Sanvictorres, who is not here, but Heath is. Heath, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And our Fire Department, who did a great job, fantastic job. Division Chief Jeremy Sanchez. He said, "Thanks for having us, we're thankful that you're there." And it's not just a fire that happened on Saturday night, it's all the time. And our school district employees are there all the time. They're the ones that are taking care of our kids during the day, they also take care of our neighborhoods at night. So on behalf of a very grateful board, thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
That's awesome. Those are real heroes, folks. Item F1, Board Agenda Discussions, any items, Dr. DeRosiya, we need to move?
Yes, President Williams, we will be moving Action Item 11, the Sprint Cell Tower replacement, to precede the Consent Agenda. We will be tabling the acceptance of Item 8 in the Consent Agenda Item 9. And we will be moving Action Item 14 to follow Ed Services Item 9 to preceding the meeting of the Monrovia Unified School District Financing Corporation. And finally, we will be pulling Action Item 18 from this agenda.
So noted. Item F2, Approve the Minutes of the Joint Board of Education Personnel Commission Meeting, of November the 8th. It's been moved.
Second.
Second it. Ms. Huff?
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Rich.
Yes.
Board President Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Item F3, Approve the Minutes of the Special Education, Special Board of Education Meeting for the 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Rich.
Yes.
Board President Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Item G1. The Board of Education would like to command Hannah Eiler, Dr. DeRosiya.
Thank you, President Williams. Brad Oaks Elementary School is well represented here tonight, also because we have a third grader, Hannah Eiler. She's the architect behind Hannah's Hound House, which is a canine-friendly gingerbread house made of dog treats, rawhide, and peanut butter. Oh, I am so glad. Hannah, if you would, I will meet you at the podium. I've been looking forward to meeting you, and I believe that is your mother, Mrs. Eiler? We'll call her Mrs. Eiler. Hannah hopes to raise $5,000 this year to give to the Humane Society, as well as to buy toys and gifts for children who will be spending the holidays at Children's Hospital. This is Hannah's second year at the ripe old age of nine. Second year in raising funds with canine treats. And 100% of the proceeds will be going to both of these charities. Last year, she raised $2,500, and she is going to double it this year. If you are interested in purchasing a house for a hound, they will be $10, and the information is on the board behind me, December 16th, that's this Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., or you can do some pre-ordering online. Hannah, congratulations on a job well done. Hannah, why don't you show us what's in the box? And the peanut butter is the frosting, and keeping it all together. Thank you, Hannah, what a creative idea, it is ingenious. Clearly representative of our students in Monrovia. I have a certificate for you. Will you stand over there, so we take a picture with you?
We're at item G2, the Board of Education would like to recognize, congratulate, rather, the following students, receiving the ACSA Every Student Succeeding, Dr. Kaiser.
It gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce to you four wonderful students who were recognized at Cal Poly for the Every Student Succeeding Award that is delivered from the ACSA organization each year. And these students are Amy Gonzalez from Canyon Oaks Mountain Park, Tylena Moore from Clifton Middle School, Jolene Noriega from Monrovia High School, and Gilbert Rivera from Santa Fe Middle School, Computer Science Magnet.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Administration, parents, and the Monrovia community. I am a proud principal of Clifton tonight. I am Jennifer Jackson, and I am speaking on behalf of our school community for a very, very special young lady. She's really nervous, so I'm gonna let her stay in her chair, but I'm gonna keep staring at her, so she can't escape all the great things I'm gonna share. Tylena Moore is so deserving of this Every Student Succeeding honor. Tylena arrived as a new student to Clifton this year, and transitioned beautifully in the face of adversity. Tylena and her family are currently homeless, moving from motel to motel with the support from government agencies. Tylena lived with both parents out of state until 2010, when they divorced. Since that time, family circumstances have been unstable, forcing the family to move around frequently, and requiring that she enroll in multiple schools. Tylena has been moved from one family member to the next during these difficult times, in addition to immediate family members battling mental health issues. Regardless of the circumstances stated, she's come to school with a positive and respectful attitude. She is soft-spoken, but driven to give her best each and every day. The lack of stability in her home life does not impact her desire to be committed to the work needed and required of learning. She is the true definition of resilience. Tylena's teacher, Mr. Ray, states that ever since her first day at Clifton, she has demonstrated CPR, courteous, polite, and respectful behavior, and has an unbelievable work ethic. She uses her time wisely in class and does an excellent job collaborating with peers. Another teacher, who I see in the back, Mrs. Ayala, describes Tylena as responsible, thoughtful, and polite. She is patient with her classmates and mature beyond her years. It is without a doubt that Clifton has a new superstar in the making, and we are proud of everything she has done so far to rise above life's challenges and become a role model cub. This is why we feel the Every Student Succeeding honor is so deserving here, because she really defines cub-mazing. A quote by Angela Schwint stands out to me when I think of Tylena. "While we try to teach our children all about life, our children teach us what life is all about." Tylena is a perfect example of this, and is currently impacting everyone she comes in contact with at Clifton. She has impeccable attendance, an inspiring attitude, and truly sets the bar for what it means to succeed in the face of adversity. On behalf of Cub Nation, and Tylena, if you look around the room tonight, there are a lot of people who work there who are here in support of you this evening. We are so proud of you and excited to give you this Every Student Succeeding award. Come join us at the podium. And now I'd like to introduce the Santa Fe Administration, Dr. Zamoripa and Mrs. Iskare.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson, good evening, Board of Education and MUSD Cabinet. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to celebrate another awesome Cougar Scholar, and this is someone who our wonderful Assistant Principal, Mrs. Megan Iskare, has had the privilege and opportunity of working with closely over the past three years. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Iskare to tell you more about tonight's honoree from Santa Fe.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you so much for being here to help us honor such a wonderful, awesome Cougar Scholar, Gilbert Rivera. Gilbert is a student who is very special to us at Santa Fe. I will not lie, I am biased, he is very special to me. I have worked very hard with Gilbert, along with an amazing team of support that we have at Santa Fe. Honestly, I feel that Gilbert is overcoming himself as his own worst enemy. He is a student who has such potential and intelligence, but doesn't always want to rise to that and show his true potential. Of course, he's social, and that always plays a role. But through the time that we've had to work with him, he has overcome some of those challenges to realize that he is capable and able to make the grades and do what he needs to do, to make it across the stage and reach his future goals. That is why we honored Gilbert Rivera with this reward tonight, because we wanted to recognize that he has worked hard, and he is continuing to work hard to accomplish whatever it is that he wants to accomplish. He knows that he has people who believe in him, but most importantly, he believes in himself. And that's what really counts when you honor a student tonight, such as Gilbert Rivera. I'd like to thank his family who are also here tonight. Jessie and Monica, thank you so much for your continuous support of your children, who've all gone through Santa Fe, and continue to support your son Gilbert as he finishes his eighth grade year at Santa Fe. We are very excited to honor Gilbert with this reward and recognition tonight with the Every Student Succeeding. Thank you so much, please join us. Okay, and next up will be Mr. McInnis from Monrovia High School, thank you so much. I am so sorry, that'll be Mr. McKendrick, I'm so very sorry. He will be representing and honoring a student from Canyon, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, family, friends. This evening, I have the privilege to award a special student at our schools, at our alternative schools, Amy Gonzalez, who's actually here tonight as our Board Representative. Amy? This is Amy's second year as our Board Representative. She did such a wonderful job last year, she's back here, and you would not think that she'd gone, she has gone through so much for herself and her family over the past couple of years, because she, as you see her now, she's always smiling and beaming with this radiant face and presence. I honestly won't go into detail about the things she has I honestly won't go into detail about the things she has overcome, because I don't want to get choked up on camera here, but I do know that someday it could possibly be a bestselling book or a blockbuster movie, the things that she's overcome. And for our students and our staff at our school, she again exemplifies what many of the students here tonight exemplify in what they've overcome, yet still being positive and hopeful, and reaching for their dreams, working hard, being resilient and hopeful. And I can't say anymore without thinking of the things that she's experienced even recently with her mother's health. And again, that's the extent I'll share with, is some of the things, like I said, even recently she's experienced. But I do want to recognize her as one of the very special student and honor her with this succeeding award. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Mr. McGinnis from the other high school, Monrovia High School.
That's all right. I know where you work. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I too have the outstanding privilege to introduce a wonderful kid who many of us know and were very proud of, Jolene Noriega. Come on up, Jolene. So Jolene is the quintessential, quintessential example of perseverance. She has continued to show diligence and determination to be successful in a high school in spite of some significant challenges well beyond her control. I first met Jolene years ago, 11 years ago, when she was a second grader, on the day that her mother was in a terrible car accident. I was her summer school principal at the time, and I just filled in to provide some emotional support. So many years later, at high school, I got to know her again and learned a little bit more about her childhood. I reconnected with her and learned about some family struggles, some times of unstable living arrangements, multiple bouts of unemployment at the home, and most recently, the death, the passing of her mother. All the while, Jolene continued to come to school regularly, complete, complete her schoolwork, and kept her life together. It is amazing that the human spirit, especially at such a young age, can withstand such challenges. In talking with Jolene, it is clear that she has the purpose and plan for her future. She is unwavering in her goal of graduating from Monrovia High School and being the first one in her family to attend college. She is taking her very first AP class this year, and she's doing a great job, and she plans to take more next year. When asked if there was someone who made a very special connection with her, she immediately said her seventh grade English teacher, Ms. Julie Smith, who's here tonight. This is maybe why, after attending Citrus College, she wants to transfer to a university and become, guess what, a teacher. She wants to earn her degree in education so that she can teach seventh grade English. This is conviction. This is determination. This, ladies and gentlemen, is perseverance. It's an honor for us to recognize her. It'll be exceptionally honored, I'll be exceptionally proud to honor her next year with her high school diploma as she gets one step closer to her dreams. Jolene, congratulations.
Administratives, can we gather all for one picture to include Mr. Glass? Item G3. The Board of Education would like to congratulate Erica Ramirez on receiving the California League of Students Educator of the Year. Dr. Kaiser?
Erica, please join me at the podium. Board and guests, it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce to you Erica Ramirez. Erica Ramirez was selected at her high school as being the Educator of the Year in a wonderful nomination to the California League of Schools, the California League of High School Division. There were 10 nominees throughout the entire Southern California region, from San Luis Obispo all the way down to Pomona and Southern California. 10 educators were honored in Woodland Hills by this organization. And during the dinner, the nominees delivered speeches on what it means to be an educator, why teach. And Erica gave a compelling speech that had every single eye in the audience just in tears and looking at her saying, wow, I want to teach too. Erica's story in becoming an English teacher has a great deal to do with her own journey. And as she described her journey in becoming a teacher, it's with the passion that she gets up every day to teach the children here in Monrovia. And I'd like Erica to just say a few words, and I know that you have a long speech memorized, but just a few words about why it is that you teach.
Good evening, everybody. I guess ultimately, I teach because I do believe that literacy gives our students and gives everybody the opportunity sort of to transcend their current status in life. And I believe that with authors like Malcolm X and Frederick Douglass, like they're able to see that and see their journeys, right, and realize that they too are, can transcend, right, your, their own realities. So I think that, that happened to me, and I think it could happen to our students too.
And I do believe that every student that Erica has ever taught in this district would agree that she's very deserving of the honor of Educator of the Year.
We're at Item G4. The Board of Education would like to congratulate Coach Jerry Chow in the Monrovia High School Varsity Football Wildcats. Mr. McGinnis, will you do the honors?
Thank you very much. Good evening again, everybody. It is a wonderful opportunity to, it's a great high school to work at, and it's a wonderful place for our kids to thrive and to flourish because of great kids that we have, because of the outstanding teachers that we have, and because of some wonderful leadership that we have in the classroom and on the athletic field. So this year, I'm pleased to introduce Jerry Chow, our coach and our leader of the squad. And I'd like to have him introduce his team, the Rio Honda League Championship Team from this school year. So, Mr. Chow.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, and thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Throesian, Dr. Jackson, and the rest of the superintendents here. And I don't want to forget the administration at Monrovia High School that has been so supportive. I promised these guys that I'd be real quick, and I'll just introduce you guys. Senior captain, defensive back, Luis Suarez. Come on up. We're lining up right here. Junior captain, quarterback, Isaac Scott. Senior captain, quarterback, Trevor McPherson. Coach, coach, can you bring him up front? Senior offensive lineman, four-year letterman, Jack John Kidderman. Senior linebacker, John Garcia. Senior linebacker, Darius Smith. Senior offensive lineman, Mike Schmidt. Senior offense and defensive lineman, big boy, Nick Diaz. Senior lineman, recovering from ACL surgery, one of the most hardest-working guys. Junior lineman, I'm sorry, Garrett Crane. Gonna be a senior. Junior offensive lineman, two-year letterman, Matthew Dolgato. And his partner in crime, also a junior offensive lineman, two-year letterman, Albert Mayo. Sophomore running back, Devin Mays. And sophomore linebacker, Alex Suarez. This is not the whole team, it's just a little cross-section of your 2017 Rio Honda League Champions. Please give them a hand. I'm gonna take a picture.
So the tall folks should be in the front kneeling down.
Okay. Or the short, tall folks, okay. Dr. Throesian, I'll follow your lead.
President Williams, the Board had the privilege of visiting Plymouth Elementary School last, last week, I believe. And they are here today to give us a preview or an overview of Plymouth and the wonderful opportunities that we have there. We're moving this a little bit out of order so that the children can actually go home at a decent hour. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Greg Giroux, Principal of Plymouth Elementary School.
Good evening, and thank you. It's my distinct honor and privilege to serve as Principal of Plymouth, and also just to be part of just an amazing and exceptional school district, and truly inspired by all the different celebrations we've heard this evening. I'll be brief and just talk about some of the wonderful things happening at Plymouth, and also some of our... just talk about some of the wonderful things happening at Plymouth and also some of our future directions. So, we've got a lot to celebrate, our recent success, and how we're going to continue this journey. Some of the good news, this is test scores of our third grade students, and we're looking at the past three years of data and how each year... Each of the past three years, our third graders have increased their average scale scores. So, it's a wonderful trend that's rare to see, this type of trend, three years in a row. And we've also seen positive trends with our fourth grade students, both in Language Arts and Math, and our fifth grade students, although last year... Two years ago, the fifth graders took a dip, but our last year's fifth graders performed superbly. So, we have wonderful trends on our assessment data for our students. We also looked at what percent are at or above standard on that same test, and we've seen a positive trend in Language Arts, although in Math, an area that we're going to be focusing on, is the concern that some of our students... Few of our students are at or above the standard in Math, so something that we're looking more deeply in. What we also wanted to see is this just something that's happening at Plymouth? Is it a district situation? Is it... So, we looked at actually the state data and looked at all the students taking the same test in the state, so a huge sample size, and what we found is that students throughout the state of California are struggling in the same way. So, we're still concerned about our students, but it also puts it in perspective and so that we don't overreact necessarily, but we see what can we do to support our students, especially in Math. Some of the good news is although few of our students were performing at or above in Math, at the bottom end, actually I should say our cohort scores, they're actually improving their scale scores, so our average is going up, although fewer at the top. That means that at the bottom level, few of our students are below the standard, so they're kind of meeting in the middle. So, there's a positive trend overall, but there's just a higher peak in the middle of that. So, one way to look at that, this is a comparison of Plymouth students compared with the state of California, and we're actually outperforming the state as far as the percent of our students who are below standard. So, we keep decreasing that number of students, whereas in the state of California, so far, the last three years, the percent has increased. So, this is good news for Plymouth. We want to continue that trend. Another piece of positive news is our enrollment has increased significantly, especially this past year. We're at, I think, as of yesterday, 454, which is a high, at least going back to 2012. So, it's another... It's fantastic evidence of the good things going on at Plymouth and the words getting out, not just our amazing programs, but really the quality of the folks that work at Plymouth, our teachers, our staff, our parent involvement as well. We had conversations with our teachers about what are some things contributing to the success at Plymouth, the recent success, and they mentioned some key themes, a sense of community in the classroom and amongst our staff and with our parents and families, the instructional strategies that they've been able to implement more and more effectively, the collaboration that takes place with our staff, and also our use of data, not just the teachers looking at data, but our students looking at their own data and learning about setting their own goals, so that they're more aware of where they need to go. As we continue the journey, we are redefining our focus, and some of the key themes that have come up amongst our staff, there are two key areas. One has to do with the academics that we want to continue to focus on and the things that we are going to be more and more important as we move forward, but also some of the traits that we really want to foster in our students that we know will be important for their success, not just in elementary school, but middle school, high school, and beyond. So, we have something that we're calling a guiding principle, and that is that we want to ensure that we are promoting within our students perseverance, grit, and a growth mindset, that we know that that's something that's going to help them achieve and succeed in life. Academically, we want to have a refocus on critical thinking. We want to make sure that our students are developing high-level reasoning skills, problem-solving, and communication skills. These are also part of what they call the 21st century skills. Something that's inspiring some of the research around mindset that links to our guiding principle, and this is just a quick example of a study that was done about the brain, and we have... These are two kids, one who has a growth mindset, the other has a fixed mindset. The child with the growth mindset, they've both made a mistake, actually, so they're taking a brain scan after they've made a mistake, and one child, where you see that red and orange and yellow, is brain activity, which means they've made a mistake and they're excited... Something's excited in the brain, there's an opportunity to learn, whereas the other student, there's a shutdown, and these are the kids who, after they make a mistake, they don't really want to address it, they don't want to deal with it. So, we know this goes on every day in every class, in every classroom, really, so we want to do what we can within our students. We want to make sure that we're getting that brain activity, the kids are excited to learn, and look at mistakes or setbacks as opportunities to learn and grow. This year, more than any year, as far as I've been told, we have this energy with our parents and community. There's always been a wonderful parent contingent at Plymouth, and this year, we're really building upon that. They're becoming very involved, not just with PTA events, but even with our instruction. They helped design our office and redesign it. They're very interested in the mindset and our guiding principle, so we're excited to move forward with our parents as well. And finally, something that really frames our work at Plymouth is our commitment to continuous improvement, that no matter where we are in our success, no matter what setbacks we may have, we're constantly looking at, what's our next step? How can we continue to improve at every level, whether it's in a classroom, in our administration, with our custodians, but as an organization, we're committed to this continuous improvement. And of course, this is a reminder why we do the work we do, and I'm so grateful that we have some of our... Two of our fantastic students here with me today, with us tonight, who are going to present, and maybe I can turn it over to one of our fantastic teachers, our manner teacher, Mr. Steve Cook. Thank you.
All right, you two stand up. All right, turn around. All right, it's late for these guys. All right. This is Aiden Kong, this is Kyle Lin. Can you guys give them a big hand? Seven years ago, eight years ago, they were in utero. Today, they are learning the world's third most difficult language, right behind Navajo and Finnish. Can you believe that? We are so lucky at Plymouth because we get code to the future. We get to use computers. So, as in the old days, most kids had that pencil at some stage, learning Chinese characters, stroke by strokes. You know, kids these days, they have no pencil or pen, they're doing this. Well, they're going to demonstrate right to you what we do on a daily basis in Chinese, okay? Aiden's going to start. Go ahead, Aiden. Okay. For example, this is something that a second grader at Plymouth is learning. Actually, this is first grade material. It's kind of basic, but I thought for you guys, I'd dumb it down a little bit tonight. Okay. All right. This is a little story that we're learning right here, and it has lots of adjectives, nouns, and verbs in here, and it also talks about animals. In fact, our curriculum last week was talking about the rainforest, and it was also talking about water. From there, we can expand into all kinds of areas, including, for example, the Three Gorges Dam on the Yangtze River. They're learning about the freshwater dolphin that was from 25 million B.C. and went extinct in 2006. We've tied that into science. Okay. What he's typing right here, he's saying that the little, not pig, because in Code to the Future, we don't have a sprite that has a pig, but we do have a fish. And so, on a moment's notice, we went ahead, and he's taken out this character right here, Zhu, and he's put Yu, and that's what he's typing right now. All right? In a minute, he's going to type something that we would just be verbalizing in the classroom, and that's something that these kids are good at, not only reading the characters, but also as we create conversation, then from within their brain, they're creating it onto the screen. The next thing that when they get done, they're going to show you how they can take that and apply it into Scratch. Scratch is part of Code to the Future, using the computer to do computer programming, and I don't know if I'm using the right word on programming, but they're coding in the classroom. We're blessed to have so many computer cards at our school, and it keeps kids so engaged. Instead of saying, hey, we're just going to memorize a particular dialogue, it's the idea that we're going to create, and then from there, we're going to take what we've created in Chinese, and then they're going to create some more on the computer within Scratch. All right. Can you stand up for a minute here? While he's typing that... Oh, here, 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 here. 起来 好，ok Okay, I know it's late, but just keep the amazement going. Okay, they're seven and eight, okay? All right. He's going to type his. Don't worry, we'll be done in a minute, and then they're going to go into the Scratch. They're going to show you something that they've created. Raise your hand if you've heard of Scratch out there. All right? Raise your hand if you're a parent and you've not heard of Scratch. Any parents that have not heard of Scratch? Where have you been? No, just kidding. All right. The amazing thing about it is, right, it was developed at MIT. It's free online, scratch.mit.edu, and you can go at home and do it. Your kids would benefit from it. What did I say was the world's most difficult language? Did I mention that? Good, the second? Good. And the third, Mandarin. All right. Well, our kids, over at Plymouth, we have kids that are bilingual as they come into Plymouth with Spanish and English, and then they're leaving trilingual with Mandarin, but we're going to consider this is another language that they're walking away with. Their little resumes, if you can imagine, at this age, okay, are starting to get full at second grade. Okay. Okay, he's going to read this and tell you what he just thought of, okay? Okay, nice job. Last, we saved the best for last. Okay, go to Scratch. Now, do you remember how we adapted? We took this little pig, we said, we don't have that sprite within Scratch, so we went and we used the fish. So, he created a fish, did this on a moment's notice, and go ahead, hit the plate, okay? Fingers crossed. Okay? No tech... Whoa! Okay, and he's going to show you what he created with his dialogue, okay? Okay. He's going to tell you the English, in case you didn't get that. All right, come on.
My family has three people, my dad, my mom, and I.
Nice. All right. I know I'm enthusiastic. They're even more enthusiastic about what's happening at Plymouth, and so there are great things happening there. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Cook, I just want to thank you so much. When we came through your classroom, I had the pleasure of meeting these two young gentlemen, and I thought the community needs to meet them. Your classes... This is indicative of your whole class, and you have seven and eight-year-old children just doing amazing things, and I thought our town needs to see this. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Can you come on up front, guys, so we can take pics? After the certificates? Present them, okay? We're moving to Item G5, Board Member Reports. Mr. Hammond?
Just real quick, there's been so many things going on, but I'd like to recognize the administration staff at Santa Fe Computer Magnet School for a fantastic performance the other evening with their music department. I'd like to recognize Mr. Tony Ellis, the music director, and the outstanding job he did with... Does with his students. It was just fantastic. But there is one particular teacher that I would like to recognize, and he's here in the audience. I didn't know he was going to be here. Mr. Dave Hart. You know, you just saw the enthusiasm that Mr. Cook has, and you imagine that in the classroom and how the kids just gravitate towards it. This is what Mr. Hart does on the Santa Fe campus. He is fantastic. He donned a jolly old fellow blue suit, because that's the school colors, and did a Dancing with the Stars move for... But he's encouraging to all the students. He never sees the downside to anything, it's always the upside. And, you know, it's a pleasure to know you, Dave, but the things that you do for the kids in our school district, thank you isn't enough, but it's what I have to give. Thank you.
If I may add, to embarrass you more, my daughter wants to be a teacher, and she's going to school for a teacher just because of you, sir. And she has your dad's, and he wants to work with you when she goes, when she graduates. So, you've been here forever, so I'm still sure you'll be here as well. But I concur, Mr. Hammond. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Student Board Reports?
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to report that Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park Schools hosted our annual Thanksgiving feast on Friday, November 17th, where students and staff enjoyed a huge warm meal together before our weeks off. We also were able to launch our mentor program with Mrs. Makia and Mr. Taro, working closely with Pastor Nick, and the volunteers from the Greater Monrovia Community to reach out and provide opportunities to strengthen our youth's self-esteem. We also have several Seekers Santa donating gifts to our students and staff members. They have stepped up to donate to the angels at Foothill Community Center. Finally, we had three of the funds to purchase supplies for their classrooms. We had three... I'm sorry. We had three of our teachers win grants from Foothill Federal Credit Union, and they will use most of the funds to purchase supplies for their classrooms. Mrs. Soha will purchase STEM engineering kits for her Mountain Park students to study Newton's Law and simple machines. She will also be able to have students build a solar robot. Mrs. Anna Denai, our science teacher, will use her grant money to purchase a dissolved oxygen meter to observe the effects of rising temperature on marine organisms. The purchase of this device will save the school an average of $700 a year. On behalf of Canyon Oaks and Mountain Park Schools, we wish you all a safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Report for the superintendent?
Thank you, President Williams. I'd like to share with the community that we did attend the California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference, where we were able to learn a little more about funding, student achievement, and family engagement. So, it was a very productive conference from which we gleaned some actionable items, things that we will be discussing again, to refine our practices.
In fact, one's on the agenda tonight.
Indeed, it is. Next, we received a phone call from the manager at Starbucks, and I was a little concerned because we have Starbucks right near our high school, and indeed, it was a phone call thanking us, wanting everybody to know that the ASB at Monrovia High School went there, cleaned up their driveway, decorated them, and demonstrated their commitment to their surrounding community. What the manager said was, this has restored my faith in students and in our schools, in our youth. And she was emotional in the conversation and the discussion, and because she said she wanted everyone to know, I made sure to include it in today's board report. And finally, I want to thank the many participants... And finally, I wanna thank the many participants and as well as the city for this year's holiday parade. We had an extraordinary turnout from our schools. And I know that our principals didn't come up with these floats on their own. I know that that gingerbread house right there had nothing to do with the principal of that school. It was all about parents putting that together and making sure that our students shine throughout the evening. So thank you to our community, to our parents, and to our students and to our teachers. It was really a fun evening and a nice reminder that we are part of a greater community. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Terosian. We're at public comments, and I just wanted to say, in the interest of time, and so that we're all allowed to speak, we ask that you please limit your comments to a few minutes or so. If comments will be on the same topic, we assure you that your concerns will be heard and will be assigned to our secretary, Dr. Terosian, to meet with you and take down your information and address your concerns further. For Items Not On The Agenda, in order to accomplish board business in a timely and efficient manner, the public comment session for Items Not On Agenda will be limited to 30 minutes. Ms. Huff, do we have anyone?
Board President Williams, the first request to speak comes from Dave Hart.
I just wanted to be sure, Terrence, you said I got 30 minutes? Go ahead and start your watch. 30 minutes. No. Thank you, Board President Terrence Williams, Honorable Board, Dr. Terosian. A number of things, well, three really. It'll probably end up with five, but sue you count for me, would you? First, Chris, heartened prayers for you and your family at this time. It's always difficult. Next, I would like to thank Rob Hammond, then mere board member, Terrence Williams, and Dr. Terosian for your attendance at the Santa Fe Computer Science and Performing Arts Magnet School. It meant the world to our staff, to our students, and it continues to show that the commitment to the Santa Fe community, that we, we have a place and we have good things going, and we do appreciate your attendance at that. Goes beyond, I can't do it. No more could be said. Thank you. Thank you. To former, what is it, what do they call the ex-president? The president, past president, Brian Wong. I'd like to thank you for your due diligence, your attention to detail. You've, your, your time has continued to keep the Monrovia Unified School District ship afloat and headed in the right direction, and I appreciate you for all that you've done with that, as do all the board members. That said, we have the brains, we have the looks, obviously, and now we have the heart of Terrence Williams, who cut him, he bleeds Monrovia green, 'cause that's the high school. But he, he has a belief in every, every school, every staff member, every community member to do the right thing. And Terrence, I am so honored to know you and look forward to your guidance over the next number of years. Congratulations. Thank you all very much. Please have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We have anyone else?
Board President Williams, I'd like to invite Gail Montgomery to the podium.
Good evening, esteemed educators. I'm the stepdaughter of a special education teacher. Teachers are always very special to me. And I've spent a good deal of my life working with our young people across the community. There's an issue that's bubbled up to me as a moderator of a forum. I know that this issue may be addressed in another fashion. That issue has to do with bullying. And that is that this week, the consciousness of America was raised, because there was a child by the name of Keaton who was bullied in his school. It made social media, the world took on to it, and he's going to be rewarded with a lot of things. What came out subsequently was that that child may have been taught at home some things that caused him to be bullied. And while no child should ever be bullied for any reason, because being a child is difficult in itself, we are seeing incidents in this town where that bullying, just as charity begins at home, bullying begins at home. And we've got some parents, sometimes with time on their hands, maybe they're stay-at-home parents, that are doing the mean girls tricks. I get a lot of things as a moderator that come to me through the back door, help me. Rob and Terrence, you've been wonderful when I've had to turn to you, because there've been incidences in the town. Sometimes we have parents who live vicariously through their children, and they're so excited for their success, but they're right there, boom down in the trenches, ready to fight somebody else's kid for what's gone on. So that's the problem. Here's the solution I'd like to suggest to you, because you don't bring the monkey to you. You try to walk away with the monkey, managing management time. And that is, I'm suggesting to you that we consider a partnership between our parents and our school district, and that perhaps we ask Santa Anita Family Services or Dr., not Dr., Bren Michelle Chazet, who is a trauma therapist that's here in town, and I'm sure she'd be happy to talk to you, to see if we couldn't put some parenting classes available during the school day for some of these stay-at-home moms, that they could possibly go to the cafeteria and get a couple of hours of instruction. Maybe they can do an exercise with their child. We can bridge it, so that those children are less apt to be taught to bully, that we teach them what the consequences of their actions are, because their kids are watching when we don't think they are. The things that fly out of their mouths, the things that they do are often reflected in, in what they get at home. Sometimes the kids are much better than that. But it does carry over. I heard an incident this week of a child who's wound up in the hospital specifically because of bullying. I know other parents are gonna wanna talk to that. I don't wanna lay a blame. I'm just hoping that we can work together to find some sort of a creative solution so that Monrovia is free of that kind of an incident. And I do have one more thing to tell you. Rob, do you subscribe to the Tom Adams School of Air Conditioning when it comes to public meetings?
We're actually lucky tonight.
It's freezing in here.
Trying to keep with the season, I think.
Okay. Well, thank you, any, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments, Gail. Anyone else for Shana?
Board President Williams, the next request to speak comes from Carmen Martinez.
Can you put it down enough? Can you guys see me? Good evening, board of members of the school board district. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. I'm here to talk about bullying. I think that bullying affects not only that child that has been bullied, the child that is bullying, but also everybody in the community. So as Gail said, sometimes it starts at home with the bullies or the kids that are being bullied, but sometimes it doesn't. So what can we do to help everybody to make this better? I'm getting old, so I can't see my writing. So I, what I would like to have is, I know bullying, and I know that we have a lot of things in the school. My kids, I have three kids, that they've gone through different areas and are at different stages in their life. And I'm very thankful for a lot of things that the district has done to help me and my children. But I still think that no child should be bullied, and I know it, maybe it's an impossible thing to, to strive for, but I still think that we should. So what can we as a community do to help? What can we do to educate the kids, the parents, or both? When bullying happens, we do not need to know how the school or the district will respond, but we do need to see that it stops. So it will save a children's life, it will save everybody else, you know? And like I said, it's not just the child that is being bullied. I'm sure the kid doing the bully also needs help. And I know that there is a lot of things that we cannot do, because we cannot do what the parents need to do. But what can we do? There's gotta be something. You know, we hear about suicides of kids that were bullied, and then they kill themselves. And ones that happen is so difficult. So I'm just praying and pleading to you to, what can we do? I'm willing to help. What can we do? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Huff, we have anyone else?
Board President Williams, the last request to speak comes from Mark Peters.
Thank you, board. I appreciate your time. I'll probably, I'll try not to take up too much of your time. Monrovia family members, board, I come before you today with a very heavy heart. First, let me introduce myself. My name is Mark Peters. I am, I'm trying to get this correct here. I am the scoutmaster for a boy scout who attends a Monrovia school, a family friend, and have been given permission to speak by the family today before you. I am here before you today with a very heavy heart and a very deep sadness to address the life of a 12-year-old who wants to end it due to the being bullied. Whenever I hear that of a scout that has been a target and a victim of bullying at a school, I know exactly what he is going through. Being an Asperger adult and a victim of bullies when I was young was a commonplace in my life, and my school just stood by and did nothing to help me. And honestly, they didn't know how to help. They were too afraid to deal with the parents of the bullies. This is where we, the parents and the leaders of the victims and the school, need to take a stand and draw the line in the sand and empower our students. While conducting a scoutmaster conference this past Monday night, the scout opened up to me that he does not feel safe at his school and is terrified to go back. He started shaking and curled up in a ball on the couch. This broke my heart, because my son is also with a disability, and when he is terrified, he will do the same. He stated that this has been going on for quite some time now and can't take it anymore. Immediately after this conference, I met with his parents, as they were aware of this, and they informed me of all that has happened to him and his brother. This is far more than a typical bullying. This is a bullying of a student with disabilities, who has not the normal capacity and capabilities of reason and ability to react under intense fear, harassment, and physical assault. However, I feel that without swift and adequate consequences for these kids, their behavior will continue. What has happened to this young man is reprehensible. Being a boy scout leader for the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, my goal is to eradicate bullying in the program. Within my pack and troop, it does not exist. As our amazing leaders and parents know, as well as the scouts, that our pack and troop have a zero tolerance policy. Our scouts are held to a higher standard. I was given the option tonight to read some quotes from the mom and dad in this. I'll just read a few excerpts, as I don't wanna go into too many details. The young man was called a weirdo, crazy, by many of the kids, bullied frequently on a daily basis on the playground and at lunchtime. Their bikes were vandalized beyond repair. They can no longer ride them to school. Nothing has changed for these young men. Yesterday, one of the boys, this was on Tuesday, gave his dad a bunch of pencils and pincaps that were, the bully were throwing at him in math class. Each time the kid knew, threw something, he would pick it up, put it in his pocket. He never told the teacher about this, as he was petrified of retaliation. He said he would rather tolerate it. No, no kid, no scout, nobody should tolerate bullying at any age, at any level. The parents were recommended that in order for their son to avoid being called a weirdo when being bullied, they should, they should throw away his old clothes, which he has always likes to wear, because if you knew the student, he's very comfortable, and when you have a disability such as he, you need, he needs to be comfortable in his own skin and what he's wearing. The parents also bought jackets with no hoods, so the kids couldn't hide. But also, what was said that, by the school, is that the son always walks around hunched over to avoid eye contact and is still called names and bullied by the kids. I feel it is an atrocity to suggest that the victim changed his looks to avoid being harassed. This only suggests that this counselor is not only indifferent to his needs, but also it is evident that the counselor knows of the bullying and chooses not to recognize the ghastly behavior of the attackers. What does it mean when we choose to try and fix the victim instead of the attackers? He has been a target of bullies at school and feels too sad that he plans to end his life. Earlier this week, he was bullied by a group of boys during his lunchtime. They took away his eating utensils and his food. One kid even threw a half-eaten hamburger in his face. "Where's the supervision?" I ask you. Still, nothing happened to the bullies. Due to my activeness in anti-bullying classes and autism awareness, I keep abreast of the laws that come into effect. I'll go on and share a few of those laws with you. It is my duty to protect my scouts from the violence as a leader should do. No child should fear going to school, let alone think that they only way out from feeling the pain and suffering from bullying should be to end their life. This tells me that no action has been taken to help these children. Because of this, I will be their voice. Under the California State Safe Place to Learn Act, all schools in the state must adopt policies and procedures to prevent and address student-on-student harassment, intimidation, and bullying based upon actual and perceived characteristics of the victim-student. California Education Code 48900, the Act defines bullying as a severe and/or pervasive physical or verbal conduct that is directed toward another student and that can be reasonably predicted to place a reasonable student in fear of harm to person or property because a reasonable student to experience a substantially detrimental effect on his or her physical mental health. California Assembly Bill AB-9, also known as Seth's Law, reinforces and expands the Safe Place to Learn Act to help safeguard all public school students. Seth's Law requires public schools in California to update their anti-bullying policies and programs. And it focuses on protecting students who are bullied based upon their actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, as well as race, ethnicity, nationality, gender, disability, and religion. Due to inaction by teachers, administrators, and other staff to address the bullying when they see it resulted Seth's Law, and is named after a 13-year-old California student who tragically took his own life in 2010 after years of anti-gay bullying that his school failed to address. I'll conclude, as a father, a scout leader, an autism advocate, I implore you to please take action for our children. All of this could have been avoided, and now a child suffers. There's one child too many. The inaction to eradicate bullying is a direct act of deliberate indifference and neglect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Huff, we have anyone else?
There are none.
Be mindful that I acknowledged earlier that you can get with our superintendent to follow up. We will address your concerns. Also, I'd like to entertain public comments for Item On The Open. Forgive me.
Mr. Peters, do we have your contact information? Okay, thank you.
And that, really, that means everyone that spoke up here, thank you for bringing that my attention. Make sure that Dr. Terosian have your contact information, so we can respond to all your As mentioned, public items, public comments, rather, for Items On The Open session agenda, your comments may be at this point or at time, the item is considered in first place. I do stand corrected. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Anyone wants to speak, even though you did not fill out a card for Items On The Agenda? Just come to the podium, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation. My name is Diana Nichols. I'm a resident of Monrovia and a parent of a student with a disability in this district, a first grader. I have contacted each of you. My daughter still sits at the back table of her classroom by herself. The rest of the class sits at the other four tables in front of her. I appreciate your messages of inclusion. I appreciate your commitment to not tolerate this. I appreciate your commitment to not tolerate this. I appreciate how you understand bullying. And I want you to understand that it also comes from teachers. And when teachers show that a child is different and to be excluded, children see that. The child herself perceives that. And that is where it continues. I ask that you take action because, as I have told you before, this is deliberate indifference. I have filed my complaint with the United States Office of Civil Rights. And I ask that you take action to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who'd like to acknowledge, come to the podium on items that are not on the agenda? Thank you. As we move forward for items that are on the agenda, as I mentioned, comments may be made at this point or at the time items considered and placed on the agenda. Anyone?
Board President Williams, there is one, but it'll come later. At its place on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for that. As had mentioned earlier by Dr. Terosian, we want to entertain action item 11, Sprint Cell Tower Replacement Project. Ms. Wu?
Thank you, President Williams. I would like to invite my MOT director, Mr. Larry Cross, to present to the board about this project.
Good evening. As you know, we have a cell tower on the high school property, and it did not pass DSA inspection. It's the first time around back in 2003 or 2001 when it was constructed. So we're now in the process, or Sprint is in the process of new design, a new location, resubmitting to DSA and doing this properly, and we will be managing it. They're also going to be placing a temporary pole at the maintenance yard, which is not done below ground. It's a, they call it a flower pot. It's a concrete base that they set on top of the ground, and it'll be a temporary installation. And that's what's before you tonight is for the approval of the process to continue.